Okay, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for November 6, 2017, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask our chaplain, Patrick Womack, Reverend Patrick Womack, to give our invitation.
Mr. Chairman, I know our hearts are all grieved at another atrocity that's occurred, and so perhaps before we pray, we could have a moment of silence for the victims and families in Southern Springs, Texas this morning. Let's bow. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, our hearts are grieved in the wake of a tragedy as we think of lives senselessly lost. And, oh Lord, we pray that you'll have mercy on those who are grieving and those who are suffering as we pray for healing, renewal, and strength. And we ask your blessing on this meeting, that as these, our commissioners, meet together this morning, that, Father, you will guide them in these decisions to be made. Give wisdom and discernment, and, Lord, grant that our county may be blessed with a sense of unity and purpose, that we may be a model to the rest of our state and even to the nation. Bless us, we pray, that we may be an example, that government of the people, by the people, and for the people should not perish from the earth. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, this morning, I'm glad to announce that it's the first morning for our interim county manager, Joel Mashburn. He's here with us today, and I'll just do a quick synopsis of his history. He is from Waynesville, grew up in Haywood County, and graduated from Waynesville Township High School in 1964. Thereafter, he went on to get a business degree at Western Carolina Universities and a master at Western Carolina University. And then it also has been educated, the UNC Institute of Government and County Administration. His career experience has always been in, as a county manager, and he was a county manager at Macon County from 1974 to 1979, Henderson County Administrator from 1979 to 1984, Greenville County, South Carolina Administrator from 1984 to 1988, Iredale County Manager from 1988 to 2011, and I think he retired after that, and then has served as a Catawba Town Manager interim from 2013 to 2015. He's involved with the International City and County Management Association. He's a life member of that group, as well as a North Carolina City and County Management Association life member. He has been married to Janie Hall Mashburn, who's from Haywood County as well, for 45 years. He has two children, a son, John, who has deceased, and a daughter, Jan, who's married with two children. He was a member of Oakdale Baptist Church, where he taught and sings in the choir, and was a deacon. And he's also a member and past president of the Statesville Fourth Creek Rotary Club. So we're very glad to have him here today, and what we have to do is swear him in, and we, right now, we don't have a register of deeds. We don't have a clerk of court, so you've got me to swear you in today. So I suppose if we'll come over to the podium, that's where I'll swear you in.
Mr. Chairman, you want to approve the contract first before we swear him in?
Well, has he not signed it? Didn't we?
He will sign it if it's approved.
I know, but we didn't approve it last time?
No, we didn't have it read yet.
All right. Well, that's not what's on the agenda, so I guess we should... We have an employment agreement that we have reviewed. I believe all of you have seen that. Basically, the term of the agreement is that Mr. Mashburn will be paid $60 an hour for the time that he serves. Since he, the good thing about it, I guess, is since he has retired, there's a certain limitation on what he can get paid, so that's a benefit for us. We get the experience, but we don't have to pay for it. So if everyone's okay with the employment agreement, and I'd like to enter into the employment agreement with Mr. Mashburn, I'll entertain a motion to approve such.
Second.
Any discussion? Do you have anything to add to that? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, and repeat after me after I say aye your name. Aye.
Joel Mashburn.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as interim county manager, so help me God. Amen. Aye.
Joel Mashburn.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Adieu.
And then the last one that we, the first one we read was Article, Article 6, Section 7 of the state constitution. The next one was the oath or affirmation to support constitutions, and then this last one is a general oath, and we'll make sure we get them all done. Aye.
Joel Mashburn.
Do swear that I will, that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of interim county manager according to the best of my skill and ability, according to the law, so help me God.
Adieu.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all very much for the opportunity.
I'll sign this right here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Might be the first and last time I ever do that. Next, we will move to the public comment session. I don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone here that would like to speak, provide public comment this morning? Come on up, Greg.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, my name's Greg West, and as most of y'all know, my dad has had problems this past month. He fell from the roof of his house cleaning the gutters and had been in the hospital for, going on for the last month, and he is a veteran, and with this being veterans' meeting here today and so forth, I just wanted to say how thankful I was for the veterans. He's been in and out of the VA Hospital now for four weeks. He, this past Wednesday, went in, had to have blood drawn from the brain. He had bleeding on the brain, but it's going very well. I'm very appreciative of the VA Hospital. They've provided excellent service. We're very fortunate to have that here close to us in Haywood County. Couldn't have asked for better service, and I just want to say thanks to all the veterans out there. I want to say thanks to the people I work with, who have been very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Mr. Chairman, this may be out of order, but when I was sworn in, I didn't reckon, I didn't realize that my wife was here, so I wasn't sure that she was going to be able to make it, and if I could, take just a moment to introduce my wife, Janie. That'd be fine, that'd probably be wise, too. This is my wife, Janie. There's Ms. Mashburn in back.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, anyone else have a public comment? Next, constituent concerns? Let's see, Mike?
Nothing, nothing to say.
I just want to reiterate what Greg was saying. My dad, also is a veteran, and he really likes the VA Hospital, and he goes over there quite a bit, and we are very blessed to have the quality VA Hospital that we have in Asheville, and he really likes all his doctors and the care that he receives there. At times when I've been there with him, it's just, it's first class, and I just want to reiterate what Greg was talking about. Also, I also want to thank, I did have some, mainly employees, county employees, thanked me for the job Robin Green is doing in her maintenance right now. We don't have a maintenance director, and she's really picked the ball up and ran with it, and they're, they've just noticed a big improvement in the, how clean things are and the way she's been making sure that those things are taken care of, and I just want to give her a little bit of a shout out.
Okay, Phil?
Mr. Chairman, this is not a concern, just bragging on our board, and I'd like to mention that, because we don't always get bragged on. I have a lot of people in my church thanking the board for the Crabtree Convenience Center, how nice it is and how convenient it is, and we don't have to worry about wrecks out on the road, so.
That's good. Brandon?
The only thing I've got is just to thank you, like to thank all the veterans for all that they've done for us. It's because of them that we can live in a free country in the county we live in, so thank you.
In just a few minutes, we'll, as part of our meeting this morning, we'll be recognizing the veterans, each one individually, the ones that are here. And I can't remember the last time we met, but you know, we met with the community clubs a couple weeks ago, and this is a constituent concern, I think it's a collective constituent concern regarding the need for food for those that go without, and I was astounded at the community club meeting when we met, how many people and how many families in Haywood County are in poverty or living in poverty. So I hope as a board, we can start moving forward. I think the community clubs are going to bring us a report about those families and what we might be able to do to help them, and I believe they have a better connection, direct connection with those families, can actually see the real need that's out there as opposed to, you know, when you just do a general handout. All right, next, we don't have any administrative agency reports. Anyone have any change or discussion about the agenda? Or if not, we'll move to the consent agenda. First item is request approval of the October 16, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes, corrections to those? Okay, if not, I'll move to request approval of budget amendments. Julie Davis has two for us. Julie, I'll let you explain both of those.
I've been known to knock things off here. I'd hate to drop the Bible in the floor. And I, too, would like to thank the veterans for their service to this great country. We appreciate it all. The two budget amendments that I have are relatively small. They're both Health and Human Services Agency budget amendments. The first one is for $500. It's to recognize a grant for the Family Caregiver Support Program through Region A. This is to host Maple Leaf's first annual Caregivers Appreciation Day.
Any questions about that, Commissioners? Okay.
The next one is a total of $13,762. This is actually Medicaid reimbursement money that the Health Department wants to use for their dental clinic to purchase some equipment. This money is reimbursed through the Health Department, and what we're going to be doing is moving it into the revenue line item so they can use it for their dental equipment.
Commissioners, any questions about that? All right. And the next, so that the next item is request approval of the application to the public school building a capital fund for lottery proceeds to pay for the current year debt service of $193,757.50 for the Pisgah High School addition renovation project. Julie?
Yes, and we bring this every year. They pay, the debt service is an annual payment. Actually, it's not an annual payment, we pay it every six months, but they, we request the money coming from DPI, Department of Public Instruction, on an annual basement, annual basis. You'll remember, this is a 10-year loan we took out for Pisgah renovations. So this is just, we've, you see it every year. It's an application to get the lottery money to come pay that debt service.
Okay, and then, do you know how long they have left on that?
Yeah, they've got five years. We're about halfway through.
Five years. That was my question.
And the debt service decreases a little bit every year. We have level principal, so the interest decreases, so.
Okay. Any questions about that? Next is request approval of the Southwestern Commission area on Aging Home and Community Care Block Grant for older adults, annual agreement for the provision of county-based aging services, which is $467,465, federal and state funds with a 10% county match. Julie, if you could explain that one.
Okay, what you have in front of you is an agreement that we bring to you to sign each year. It's between the Commissioners and the Southwestern Commission area on aging. The money flows through the Commission to the county, and then when we receive the money for these specific aging programs, we turn around and pay it out to the entities. The entities that we have this year, and we actually have had the same entities for the number of years, is interim health care, Mountain Projects, and Haywood County Health and Human Services for their Meals on Wheels program and their adult daycare program. So what you have is the agreement, and then attached to that, you have the budget that reflects the amount that Kirk mentioned, that has a 10% grant from the county, or 10% match from the county.
Okay, Commissioners, have any questions about this one?
It's just, I mean, a recurring...
Yes, we get, we get a different amount every year, but it's close to between $350 and $450,000 each year.
Next is request approval of amendments to three Health and Human Services Agency contracts with Mountain Projects due to necessary rate changes by Mountain Projects that will not affect total contract amounts. Stoney Blevins, Health and Human Services Director, Assistant County Manager.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
I bring to you three contract amendments. All of these contracts are with Mountain Projects Incorporated. Patsy and I have had a lot of discussion about these. They were doing a fiscal assessment, and they realized in a couple of their programs, they're actually no longer breaking even, so they are operating in the red in these programs. We're actually the fiscal agent for these, so there's actually no county dollars involved in these contracts, but we simply receive the state and federal funds and then contract with Mountain Projects to provide the services. I do think the rate increases are very reasonable. They've not raised these rates in years, and so I would respectfully ask if for these, one is, two of them are transportation, one is for WorkFirst, which is a program that helps people get jobs and move off of public assistance. The other's Medicaid Transportation, which is where we contract to provide trips to the doctor for mainly young children and elderly folks. And the last one is in-home aid program, where we provide a little bit of assistance to the elderly in their homes to keep them out of facilities.
Commissioners, do you have any questions about that? Okay, thank you, Stoney.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, concerns, before we vote on the consent agenda? If not, then entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the consent agenda passes unanimously. All right, so we don't have any old business, and the next issue is, the next item is new business, and the first item is request approval of proclamation recognizing Veterans' Day 2017. We have Stephen Allred, our Veterans Services Officer here, and I believe you're going to read that proclamation. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners and veterans of Haywood County have been asked to read this proclamation for the county Commissioners. Whereas, America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all, and whereas, America has called upon her men and women in uniform to fight and die to protect our national security and preserve our rights and freedoms, and whereas, on Veterans' Day, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces who have valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history, and whereas, we owe a great debt to the men and women in our national, in our nation's armed forces for their sacrifices, and whereas, Haywood County currently has approximately 7,000 veterans living within its boundary. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Haywood County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 11, 2017, as Veterans' Day in Haywood County, and calls upon its citizens to observe this day in honor of our veterans, both living and deceased, who have served on the seas and the air and on the shores to preserve our heritage and freedom. This the sixth day of November 2017. Signed, J.W. Kirk, Kirkpatrick III, Chairman, Haywood County Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
And at this time, I would like for all the veterans, if they would please stand, and we want to recognize each one of you individually, so if you could come up to the podium, I'm going to hand you a pen. I want you to, at least, you can say anything you want to, but I want you at least to provide your name and the branch of service that you served in and when you served. I know nobody wants to do that, but we really would like to recognize you. You just come right through here. We can do this a little more relaxed, it doesn't have...
Samuel E. Ferguson, I was in the United States Navy, 1964 to 1968.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Randy Brackett. I was in the US Air Force from April of '81 to September 1st of 2001.
Thank you.
Pettit Johnson, I was in the Air Force Reserve, April 1987 to September 2013.
Josh Higgins, I was in the US Military in the Army Branch from June of 2001 till June 2013.
Thank you.
And I'm Joel Mashburn, and I served in the US Army from July of '69 until March of '72.
Leon M. Killian, I served in the Army National Guard, the unit down in Canton, the 211th MP Company, from the fall of 1969 till the fall of 1975.
My name's Captain Steven Allred, Haywood County Veterans Services Director. Served, joined the Army in April 8, 1997, enlisted as a Cavalry Scout, left active duty in 2000, and joined Tennessee Army National Guard, that's 278th Cavalry. Took a scout position there, and been with that unit ever since. Started college that same year in 2000, and ultimately got a commission to Second Lieutenant in December 2004, and been an officer there since that point, and made my way up to captain, deployed with that unit to Iraq, and I'm in the process of retiring now. Got over 20 years, so I'm about ready to hang it up, but I'll, as long as I'm here, hopefully forever, I'll be at your service. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Do what? Oh, that's right, we're gonna, we were gonna do that, too. I was getting to that, Vicki. Okay, we would like for, and I shouldn't have had you sit back down, but if everyone will come up and stand right here in front of us, we're going to take a group picture of all the veterans and the Commissioners. We certainly thank you for being here, the ones here, and of course, we appreciate and thank all of the Haywood County veterans and what they have meant to this county and to this state and to this country. Without their service and the willingness to provide that service, we would be nowhere near having the kind of country that we have and the opportunity to live in this place, work in this place, and raise our families like we do. I mean, all you have to do is flip on the news, and you can see what it's like living in other countries, and that, we can say what we want to, but it's largely based on the fact of the military that we have, that we can do what we do. Anybody else want to say anything about that before we move on?
I'd just like to call me, my daddy served in World War II, fought in the Battle of the Bulge, and the thing is, I see in veterans, especially with my dad, he never told me what all went on. I found out later, he told his best friend stuff, that his best friend now won't him tell me, so that tells me that the war and the experiences these guys lived through stay in their minds forever, up until death, and that's the sad part, you know, you can forget some things, but stuff you actually see and experience, you never forget, so my hats are off to all our veterans that have lived through tough times.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, and I do want to thank my dad for serving in the Army, and then I also want to thank my father-in-law, Bill Stamey, my wife's dad. He served in World War II under Admiral Halsey in the South Pacific and was a communications officer, so I appreciate his service. He's passed away, but I appreciate, appreciate all the veterans and everything, and all that they've done for our country. They're the reason we can get up here and do this, and when you look at other countries and you look at what, what we're able to do versus what other countries do, and it's like Kirk just said, it's because of what the, our veterans have done for us is the reason we can be up here today, and I want to thank them for it.
And I'd like to also thank all the veterans in Haywood County. I've got a lot of those people that served in my family. I had two uncles that served in the Navy during World War II, and then my dad served in the Navy during World War II and was in Japan after the atomic bomb dropped for the occupation there, and he's no longer with us, but they actually left school early to serve, and some of them really never even, you know, got to come back to get their high school diploma. I know my dad left in the 11th grade to join the Navy, so anyway.
Thank you, Mike.
Just another thank you. My dad served as well, and grandparents, and had a lot of the family members that served, had a brother-in-law that served. Just like to thank them especially, along with what I said earlier, all the, all the veterans. We thank you for what you do.
All right. Next, we're moving into, the next item of new business is request approval of resolution of stepping up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in jails. I think it's Captain Jason Smiley, what are you, Major? Major, Jason Smiley, I'm sorry about that. Oh, you're fine. What? Have another proclamation?
Do we need to put the proclamation?
Yeah.
There's another proclamation?
No, no, we just never did vote on the Veterans' Day resolution.
Oh, we need to vote on the proclamation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll, I'll entertain a motion that the proclamation that was read by Stephen Allred, we approve it. So move.
Second.
Any discussion about that?
We just got caught up and really reminiscing and thanking everybody, but...
All right.
Candy keep us straight.
All in favor of that proclamation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, and that passes.
Candy keep us straight. Keep us straight.
There we go, that was a kind of, that was a no-brainer, that we were going to approve the... That was a kind of, that was a no-brainer, that we were going to approve that. Okay. All right, Captain Smiley.
Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate all the work you guys do as well. The request, requesting the approval of resolution of Haywood County to support an initiative, stepping up program with Haywood County Sheriff's Office Detention Center. The stepping up initiative is a nationwide program designed to identify and treat those suffering from mental illness and are incarcerated with local detention facilities. The purpose is to reduce detention costs through reduction of recidivism and provide people with mental health services that remain consistent after leaving the detention setting. If you'd like me to read the resolution to support stepping up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. Whereas the counties routinely provide treatment services to estimated 2 million people with serious mental illness booked into jails each year, and whereas prevalence rates in serious mental illness in confinement facilities are three to six times higher than that for a general population, the statistics showing that almost 13% of North Carolina's prison population require some type of intervention due to mental health issues. And whereas almost three-quarters of adults with serious mental illness in jails have co-occurring substance use disorders, and whereas adults with mental illness tend to stay longer in jail upon release and are at a higher risk of recidivism than people without these disorders. And whereas county jails spend two to three times more on adults with mental illness that require interventions compared to those without these treatments needs. And whereas without the appropriate treatment and services, people with mental illness can continue to cycle through the criminal justice system, often resulting in tragic outcomes for these individuals, their families, and communities. And whereas the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has undertaken a serious effort to address these local services' needs for those with mental illness through the appointment of special task force, and Haywood County, like all counties, take pride and responsibility to protect with hands in health and welfare and safety to our residents in efficient, safe, and socially just ways. And through the stepping up initiative, the National Association of Counties, the Council of State Governments, Justice Center, and the American Psychiatric Foundation are occurring counties to reduce the number of people with mental illness in county jails.
All right. Thank you, Captain Smiley. Commissioners, do you have any, any comments before I ask for this resolution to be approved? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution of stepping up initiatives to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in jails.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And I'd like to have, I'll have some discussion, I mean, not on the fact that we're going to pass it, but I mean, this is a tremendous problem. If you're not aware, haven't dealt with people with mental illnesses or substance abuse that leads to mental illnesses, it is prevalent and it's all very, very difficult to provide treatment and to get any kind of help. And lots of times, they end up either in jail or in the hospital for a brief period of time, and then out of the hospital, back into the hospital. And so, I know we've made, we pled with our representatives and our legislators to try to do something to approve that, and that's been a struggle, but it is something that we need to continue to try to work on.
Yeah, the trend on this mental health and all has been to reduce funding instead of increase funding, and we just had that opioid session a couple weeks ago, and it was pretty eye-opening, and, you know, what's going on in our area. And anybody can read, I mean, that's, it's pretty prevalent, not only here, but everywhere else. And, you know, we've got serious problems, and so we need to work on whatever we can do to try to help.
You know, I agree with Mike. That's, that's the funds across the nation and state that are being cut, and yet we know more and more people need those services. They are not there because the money's not following the problem.
I think some of the atrocities we see across our nation are directly related to mental health.
Mr. Chairman?
Normal person don't do those things.
I'm sorry. As you, as you know, I'm scheduled to go down to Raleigh a week from Wednesday to attend the Special Task Force of County Attorneys meeting with the Attorney, NC Attorney General and others to discuss what the counties and county attorneys can do on, for this, about this problem. I'm scheduled to go down there next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday. All right. I'll entertain, we'll go ahead and vote to approve that. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to request approval of 2018 personal property depreciation schedule. Judy Hickman is here, our tax assessor. Judy?
Good morning. I would also like to...
Yeah, we did.
We did.
First or second?
I seconded, didn't I?
Yeah, we did, first or second, and then...
I seconded.
We have any discussion, and so I said we wanted to discuss. I know, I'm, I'm getting a little bit better.
I know I seconded.
Somebody messed up a couple times. All right, Judy, go ahead.
I would also like to thank our veterans. My father and my grandfather both served, and I'm very thankful for all of y'all. Thank you. I'm requesting approval for the 2018 personal property depreciation schedules. There are no changes from last year to this year, other than the depreciation for each year.
Questions?
Yeah, I just got a couple questions, and this is just for clarification and maybe people that are listening to us, you know, obviously that you've said it didn't change, it's just, it's pretty much what we've been using, but I guess maybe to give just a little background on how you, have the basis on how you come up with this, I'm sure it's done through a lot through the State Department of Revenue and all their information, just so people might know.
Yes. Most of our schedules are recommendations that are handed down through the Department of Revenue for businesses. We do use the trend and schedules that they send to us each year. We also, as far as the motor vehicles go, we follow suit with what the state requires. We also use the tech data evaluation along with that.
Okay. All right, and if someone does not agree with the value placed on their personal property, what do they need to do?
They have 30 days from the date of the first notice of value, and they can appeal. They have to do so in writing. So, just need to send in a letter stating what you're appealing and why you're appealing it. We'll be more than happy to look at it.
The personal property values, are they, are they sent out at the same time every year or at different times based on when you...
Personal property can go out at different times throughout the year, especially with motor vehicles. We do look at the campground areas, and sometimes we'll, we'll see new campers coming in and out, so they can go out at different times of the year.
So, the, the county will place a value on there, and they will base largely part of that on the depreciation schedule, but that does not, just because the county has said this is the value that we're placing on the personal property, they can still contest that and bring in pictures or other evaluations to show that their particular personal property is not worth the value that we are showing.
That is correct. Everyone has the right to appeal. You know, the more information that you provide us, the better. We're more than happy to take a look at it. A lot of times, people like to bring their vehicles in, and we send an appraiser out to look at it, and we really do try to work with the taxpayers and make it whatever's more convenient.
But there's no way that we can go take a look at every piece of personal property. We have to basically take the year, the date it's been purchased, and then, and the value that, that we would have for that, and a depreciation of that. But you have to show if your personal property is not in that good a condition, that it's not, you have to provide proof of that, and then the tax can be, or the value can be reduced. But any other way, we, we just can't look at every single piece. Of course, if somebody wants to say it's worth more than, than what we say it is, I'm sure they can do that as well. We actually have that with real property.
We do. We do.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Commissioners of Judy?
Yeah, I, the only, I know, I was reading about the antique vehicles, you know, I've, I've had a few people concerned about, you know, obviously, we have some older vehicles in this county that are not antiques, and of course, you know, they're getting valued a little bit more than probably are, but you all have been very good about, you bring the car in, let us take a look at it, and, and I've told several people that they need to, that's what they need to do.
That's great.
Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the 2018 personal property depreciation schedule presented by Judy.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next, we have a request approval of the resolution execution of non-warranty deed to the successful bidder on parcel number 8666, 8666294258 at 36 Gibson Street in Canton. We have David Francis, our program administrator. David?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And I'd like to as well thank the veterans who have served our country. Come from a long line of family members who served, lost a couple of family members in World War I, World War II, have a cousin whose name's outside on a monument, so it is a special day for all of us to remember, and there's a lot of special people that served our country. One housekeeping item, I'd like to, Gerald Keener's in the audience, and you mentioned Robin as well today. And just a note, the, we're not quite through with the windows replacement in the courthouse, courtroom, yet the windows over here on this side have been replaced. The two, back here at the, on the last two here have not been replaced, which is, it gives you a good feel about the, the new windows and the clarity that you can see there. And Gerald and Robin have done an excellent job of managing this project, and I would like to thank them for all their hard work as well, too, in managing the facilities and maintenance during this time. They've done a great job.
Thank you, David.
The matter at hand is, it was a county foreclosed property, recently received a bid, the Commissioners at that time counter-offered, the counter-offer was accepted, it was advertised according per the North Carolina General Statutes, there was no other offers or bids on the property, so the final amount of $5,650 is the final offer. I would recommend that the Commission approve the resolution, accepting the bid and awarding the property to Ms. Presley.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of David regarding this?
We, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about this two or three meetings ago, I believe, and sent it back, and exactly what we wanted, and so we move on.
All right, and I believe this pays all the taxes and fees and things like that?
Well, after you asked me that question earlier today, I went back and talked to Ms. Wells, the paralegal for the county, and she was instructed before that this bid amount only covered the attorney's fees and costs at that time, it did not cover the taxes. And that was what she was instructed to make the offer for at that last time.
Okay. All right, well, we've agreed to it and made the offer, so it is what it is.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioners, have any other questions about this? You know, this is the property, we took a look at the pictures, and it was, I mean, it was clearly in terrible shapes. I think Ms. Presley's happy that she got the bid, but she's got a lot of work to do. And that's good, and she'll, she'll clean it up and put it in good condition, and of course, it'll be back on there for a better, higher value. So, the quicker we can put these parcels of property back in people's hands to do something beneficial with, the better we all, all are as a county.
And on the, there was others, about five other properties that are out there as well, and there's two that have been identified by the county may want to keep for use for broadband. The other three properties, we have solicited some real estate firms, and they're coming back with us with proposals on those, so we'll be bringing that back to you, maybe at the November 20th meeting, if not, it'll be at the first meeting in December.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution execution of non-warranty deed as presented by Mr. Francis.
So, second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, David, for that, and you're up next with request approval to advertise for offers to solicit, solicit adaptive reuse of the historic hospital.
Okay. Thank you. You know, here we go again. But one of the things that I want to really concentrate on this next year is what we do with the historic Haywood County Hospital. As you know, that it's going to be 90 years old next month, and it has increasingly becoming a money pit for the county. We are approximately about $100,000 a year in maintenance and upkeep. Last week, Chris Boyd and the maintenance staff was out there trying to run down an electrical issue that took most part of the evening to get done. So, we've got to find a solution, and the, one of the solutions that we'll talk about will be going back in front of the North Carolina Housing Agency for the 2018 low-income housing credits, the LI-Tech. This year, what's different is there is two awards that'll be for the state in adaptive reuse. It's classified as just adaptive reuse. What, and we meet a lot of those benchmarks for this type with, it has to be an historic building, it has to have infrastructure and investment that's went on around it for the last 10 years, and the, what, the age of the building, so we are in, you know, we qualify for the six points that they make in this adaptive reuse. So, I'd like to pursue, you know, this avenue. It doesn't hurt to ask. The only money that we will have in this project so far that I know of and that, that we've discussed, Julie's met with the developers, Chip and I have talked with the developers over the telephone, and we think it's a good avenue to pursue once again, because we're not going to have that much money in this project, because all it's going to cost is to do the advertisement, to solicit for bids for the, the hospital. So, I think, you know, it doesn't hurt to go ask them again, but at the same time, I think we need to be planning if we don't get the award, because it's the same schedule as it was before when we talked about this two years ago. We'll get everything ready, bundle it up, send it down there to Raleigh in January, we'll get a scorecard in May, and then by September, August, we'll hear if we have won the award from the state for the reuse or readaptive use of the building. But during that meantime, I still think we need to explore avenues with, with the town of Waynesville. They are already a housing authority. We maybe look at partnership where we can do something on our own with bonds, where we, we take on this ourselves and fix the hospital up for low-income housing, we don't wait on anybody, we just take the, you know, the reins of this and do it ourselves. Other thing that we would, you know, that you may want to consider is demolition of the 19, there's three sections of the building, 1927 is the historical part, 1952, then 1956. So, we may have to start considering those things due to the cost, and then with demolition out there, we might be able to go back and redo something else as well from the ground up instead of a readaptive reuse, be able to go and offer that property and make a low-income housing out there, because a lot of the awards out there for low-income housing are from the scratch or from the ground up, because, you know, so there's only two readaptive uses in the whole scheme. So, there's different avenues that I think we, we should explore simultaneously as we're doing this, instead of waiting until September and go, man, we didn't get that one again. At least we'll be down the road a little bit further with this.
Okay. Commissioners?
Well, you know, I went out there the other day, just happened to be in that area, just kind of pulled in the parking lot, looking around, and obviously, you know, at some point, something needs to be done rather sooner than later. You know, we've, we've, we've attempted several times to, and thought we had things worked out, out there that, and obviously, it didn't, so I think that we, we must continue looking at not just one alternative, but several, like you're talking about. You know, I've also thought about the demolition thing, but I wonder what issue we would have with the 1927, with it being historical, about demolition. I know you could probably get the back of it took down, but I don't know about that.
Yeah. It will need to have a structural engineer come and look at it. From, understanding from talking before, that there, you know, that the 27 piece may be leaning, but that was the conversation. I've looked in our records for this hospital, and I don't see any evidence of that, it was just, I think, somebody eyeing it and saying it was that. So, we used a engineer that's helped us, worked on this project as well, too, is over in Asheville. I would recommend that we, you know, seek his guidance out again, because he's, he's worked over there, he worked over at the hospital one other time before.
Yeah, even the demolition would be rather expensive, so...
Yes.
But I'm, I just, I think that we need to continue aggressively looking at any option we can do, you know, whatever, and, and, you know, hopefully in the next year or whatever, we'll have at least a clear thought or idea, and if something doesn't work out, we got some... thought or idea, and if something doesn't work out, we've got something else to bounce back to.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'd like to do, sir.
I'm in support of that also, David. Seems like we've had a couple of other deals that have fell through, and we keep waiting around, you know, there's going to come a point that we're going to have to do something. So I'd rather be ahead of the game and look at our other options, you know, before next year. So I'm in favor of exploring several options.
Okay. The, like I said, I would explore, the town of Waynesville and I have talked, Chris was with me as well, too, and we just started discussing, you know, partnering up there. But they're interested in, we contacted some folks over in Asheville last month, and then Kevin and I got the news on Tuesday that they were just too busy to handle their project for the next year. So again, I think we either have to take the, you know, the bull by the horns and do it ourselves or, you know, the other alternative. But let me clarify, I'm not talking about demo in the nineteen twenty-seven part. Let me clarify that before anybody gets the wrong impression. It would only be the back part that we demo. The front part is a state historic national site, state site, not national state site.
So no matter what is done, we have to retain that portion?
Correct. Yes.
Well, we really do need to get somebody to take a look at it.
We do.
We need to see the cost of retaining that portion and demo in the back, the back portion because, I mean, that could be prohibitive as well.
And can it be done? I don't know. Can it be done? Can it be done that way? It's been talked about, you know, for years, you know, how that would happen, the cost of it, you know, what the anticipated cost would be. But I, you know, without having, you know, an engineer's advice or, you know, a plan to do that, I don't know at this point.
So do you want to start these discussions, you know, as kind of parallel to allowing this adaptive reuse of the building with this particular group?
Yes, sir. I don't want to lose any time. I don't want to get to this time next year, then we're still scratching our heads. I'd rather, you know, I'd run in all these things concurrently together and then come back and say, hey, September, we got, you know, we got the award. We didn't get the award, but here's, here's the three recommendations I have for you at that point. And then I can, you know, bring, you know, once we, if we engage an engineer firm about, you know, that we can go ahead and I can keep you up to speed on any of the results that we do have along the way.
How long has the building been vacant, do you know?
Since two thousand and eleven or twelve. When did y'all move? Twelve? Two thousand and eleven or twelve?
And so that same cost that you indicated before has been continuing that entire time?
And it's, it's actually went up in the last few years.
So we're looking at right now, we're spending about eighty-five hundred dollars a month on a building that we're not using.
Correct.
Say it again, Kurt.
We're spending about eighty-five hundred dollars a month on a building that we're not.
Right, okay. I thought that's what you said.
And that we're not going to use.
Exactly.
And we can't sell. So that's, that's the need to do something about it.
David, I assumed that the twenty-seven portion that I worked at was a standalone at one time, right? That was it?
Yes, sir.
So you could assume that tearing down the rest wouldn't affect the twenty-seven, but I still wouldn't be sure on that, right?
Right. I don't know. That's, that's out of my league there. But it was discussed before about demolition, and I, like I said, I looked for, you know, how we got to where we thought that we could do that, but I just have not been able to find it since I've come back. I've been, I had, you know, the historical files, but my Dropbox that all this was stored in, so I've been able to come back.
But you'd have, if you tore down the what, the fifty-two and the fifty-six, you'd still have to build back the backside.
Yeah, you might have to build back something. You might have to still build back a brace, you know, what, it was explained to me that the twenty-seven, you know, I don't know what the appropriate structural term would be, would be listing, resting on back on the fifty-two, you know. So, you know, that would have to be determined by that. But I think it'd be some, you know, it'd be well spent to know, you know, if that's the case, you know, going ahead and looking at, you know, can we do the bonding, see if we can do the affordable housing ourselves if this doesn't work? You know, is it more benefit, you know, in the end to go ahead and consider the demolition, start from the scratch, build something new there? You know, the twenty-seven portion could remain. You know, I think we just need to explore all those options and not just keep going that down the avenue of one option. I want to broaden those.
And the cost out's going to be important. I know that renovating as well is going to be fairly expensive.
Their estimates from two thousand and sixteen, Mr. Rogers was nearly seven million dollars to renovate, you know, the entire structure at that point for affordable housing. You get a lot of buildings.
You say seven million?
Seven million.
How many units would that have been?
It would have been fifty-two or fifty-four. Yeah. And it was a mix of one and two bedrooms. But if we, you know, but like I said, you know, town of Waynesville already has a housing authority, you know, we just have to be a conduit to help them get that aspect, a portion of that done.
Well, you know, I mean, we've also just recently, and we're getting ready here in a little while to talk about the Affordable Housing Advisory Council, and, you know, we all agreed that we probably really needed to start focusing on trying to do something about it, so this could be the start of it right here.
Yeah.
If there's fifty-four units, that'd be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a unit.
Which is pretty reasonable.
Which, I really think, I don't know, I wish we could get a private, somebody private even, to go in there and do it. I mean, they'd make a profit, it sounds like, if they, you know, sell for a couple hundred thousand a piece.
So, you know, with the readaptive reuse, you know, they get the nine percent LIHTC tax credit, and then they also will, it'll qualify for the historical tax credits as well, too. So, you know, it does, you know, they can get, you know, a quicker return on their money. So it's a, it's a good project if, you know, they could still get, you know, they may not be, a developer may not be able to get the LIHTC tax credits, but if they, you know, refurbished it, they still may be able to get some of the historic tax credits to finish it up.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve to advertise for offers to solicit adaptive reuse of the historic hospital.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Next, we have request approval of resolution of the Affordable Housing Advisory Council and approval of appointments to the council. David?
Here. Back in August of this year, Donna Stewart brought forward the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Task Force and proposed the Haywood County Affordable Housing Strategy. And out of those points was the creation of the Affordable Housing Council. There was also recommendations in there as well. I don't know if you, since that's been a little bit of time there, there was several recommendations there, creating partnerships, joining the North Carolina Housing Finance, working towards, you know, a common goal of developing affordable housing here in Haywood County. From that document, again, the Affordable Housing Council is to be created with that, and there's a goal there by two thousand and twenty-eight to create four hundred units of affordable housing in Haywood County, build institutional capacity to create affordable housing, which this council will help do, and the establish the economic development strategy. There's a lot of different points in here that this council will have a lot of work to do when they begin with. Would you allow me to read the resolution?
Sure.
Please. Okay. Resolution to establish the Haywood County Affordable Housing Council. Whereas Haywood County has a documented need for affordable housing, and whereas the affordable, the Haywood County Affordable Housing Task Force developed the Haywood County Affordable Housing Strategy. And whereas, said strategy calls for the creation of an Affordable Housing Advisory Council to advise the Board of County Commissioners on affordable housing policy issues, develop specific action steps to implement the Affordable Housing Strategy, monitor and evaluate the county progress on implementing this strategy. And whereas, the Haywood County Board of County Commissioners adopted this strategy on August seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners hereby establish a Haywood County Affordable Housing Council. The council should have the following representatives. A Haywood County staff member designated by the Haywood County Manager, one Haywood County Commissioner selected by the Board, one representative from each of the incorporated towns in Haywood County, one representative from each of the following organizations, Mountain Projects, Habitat for Humanity, Haywood Pathways Center, two at-large representatives appointed by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Be it further resolved that the above council shall prepare annual reports for the Haywood County Council of Government as to the progress made each year, identify specific opportunities and barriers for consideration, and recommend any changes in council membership. The council will meet on a quarterly basis and meet more frequently if desired. Passed and approved this the sixth day of November, two thousand and seventeen. J. W. Kirkpatrick, the third Chairman, Haywood County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, Commissioners, have any comments about the resolution?
No.
I do have the appointees here, and of course, we had, I'm not sure how many applicants. Bill, did you actually apply?
That was, uh, Bill Upton.
Oh, sorry, that's right.
That's the real Bill Upton.
That's the real Bill Upton, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So these, these ten folks, these ten folks actually applied?
Yes, yes, sir.
And do we still need one commissioner and one staff member?
And one staff member, yes.
So, so these people that we've got, I mean, that meets the resolution?
Yeah, it does. And the point is says the council should have the following. And after seeing the applicants and their background, I felt it was hard to cull anybody because if somebody wants to serve in this capacity, I think that we should allow them to serve, especially this initial task force as we're going forward. Joey Garland, of course, would be the town of Clyde representative. Jamie Shepherd is for Habitat for Humanity, and Janet Banks is for the town of Maggie Valley. We've not, I anticipate that Elizabeth Teague will be there for the town of Waynesville, and Jason Burrow, or Lisa Stennett will be for the town of Canton. So we're going to have a little bit more of membership there in the at-large, you know, but it said it should have, and that's why I'm taking the liberty there, that I think this would be a good, a good group to begin with. So we just need to appoint, Mr. Mashburn would need to appoint somebody from the county, and my understanding is that Kevin would be serving as the commissioner for the county.
Anybody have any objections for Kevin's serving?
Kevin, he's been involved in this thing pretty heavily.
I decline to serve it. One bill's enough.
One Bill Upton.
Bill Upton, you may remember, has been with the Goodson, exactly with the.
Pigeon, Pigeon Street.
Pigeon, thank you. And also did the building behind us.
Hey, we're Christian Ministers.
Thank you, Hey, we're Christian Ministers. Thank you, yeah. He's been very active in the community here. He's served on both of those boards as well, too. So thank you. So the other council appointees would be Myrna Triva Harper, Joey Garland, Loretta Whaley, Bill Upton, Jamie Shepherd, Jim Blath, which would serve as the pathways member, Lisa Brown, Mark Klasby, Joan Kennedy, and Janet Banks. So we're still lacking the county appointee.
Okay. And Kevin Enslin.
Yeah, the county staff member.
Okay. And we'll wait, so as part of this resolution, we'll approve the resolution, the appointment of the names of the folks that you just read out, including Kevin. And then, Mr. Mashburn, you will appoint, I suppose, when you get ready to appoint one member to this board as well.
And that would be a staff member, though, not?
Correct. Right. Okay. I'll entertain, we have had the discussion, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as well as these appointees.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Any further discussion about the affordable housing situation? Next, we got, we have discussion of change of purpose for the county-owned property located in Jonathan Creek. David?
Commissioners, about ten years ago, the county purchased twenty-two acres down on the Jonathan Creek community, anticipation of building a recreation park. Unfortunately, with the collapse of the economy and due to the cost of building the facility, everybody found that it was prudent in the best interest to withhold on starting or beginning any construction down there for the ball fields. And of course, as ten years goes by really quick, and we still have not been able to come up with a use and a plan for the property. We sort of began talking about this back in February with Mr. Rogers. And recently, we've been contacted by Publix about moving a large quantity of dirt that would help elevate the property out of the flood plain. As you know, the property does border Jonathan Creek, and a certain, a large portion of the property is in the floodway and the flood plain. Moving that dirt out there would elevate the property from the basic flood elevation up above that to where we could possibly look at, you know, do we think about doing this? Do we think about putting in economic development as a site for a business to move on? Do we think about, you know, affordable housing opportunities? You know, if it would qualify, it's a little bit further out there. But as again, if we're doing bonding their own, does it, you know, is this something that we, you know, think about? So while we had the potential to receive the dirt from the construction site, I thought it was our interest that we discuss this and figure out how we want to proceed with this property, you know, because like I said, we're moving forward with the hospital, you know, we're trying, I feel like we, some of these other properties, we need to start having some action with. You know, the economy's improved, you know, we're a tier-three county, you know, we, tax revenues are coming in, you know, good from sales, property taxes, you know, so it's time to start. We've got to put these things back on the table. You know, even though that we have low unemployment here in the county, I still feel like there's a need for a business site that we can offer up. You know, with what you read in the paper recently, and our partnership with the Asheville Chamber, you know, we're really moving forward. We're taking a leap and a big step by doing this. And having this inventory makes us more attractive as we go out there. But that's just one of the thoughts to do with this property, and I just wanted to start having this general discussion now of what to do about that.
Okay, Commissioners. Go ahead.
Nathan Clark's here. I know the Maggie Valley has an interest in, in the property.
Yeah, and don't think that we haven't, we know that. We absolutely know that. And, you know, I'm on the EDC board and been on it the whole time I've been a commissioner, and, you know, we have continually worked to try to, you know, bring new business, new jobs, new anything in. And the last couple, three years, having particular sites that would be attractive to present has always been an issue for us. And the, it's there. There's water and sewer down there. It's, you know, although the initial use or thoughts for that area was, you know, at that time was a very good thought, and especially with trying to attract, you know, particular tournaments and people like that, you know, to bring more people into Haywood County and put heads in beds, as the Tourism Development Authority referred to that, too. And I think that's one of the reasons that Maggie got involved with this thing. And, but, you know, obviously, as we've moved forward, we've just not been able to go where we needed to go with that. And then it's almost like the ship has sailed on the tournament-type things, as more people in our surrounding areas have gotten involved in it now. Is that saying that we couldn't benefit from that still? I, we probably could. But being on the EDC board, and I always thought that that was a very viable piece of property that could be pitched. And then, you know, of course, this dirt situation come up, but any, if we were even going to do it for recreation, we still had to have dirt. And so, you know, without any solid plans to do that, I think that we would behoove ourselves to prepare that, I mean, you know, and put it out as a, as a potential site for economic development. for economic development. It could, you know, it could go, we could have somebody interested in it, we might not, and at some point in time, if it's still available, and, you know, the issue or the money was available for recreation, then you still got it. But I think just sitting there and not really doing anything is not fair to the taxpayers of the county, and, you know, and like I said, I know Maggie's vested in it, and Maggie would be considered right up front regardless of what takes place.
And Nathan and I have talked on two occasions, back in the spring, I guess after Mr. Rogers and I had talked, and then he and I had this discussion last week when this issue came up.
Well, and you know, even...
If you wanna speak about, you know, the town of Maggie, it's okay.
Well, even while you're coming up, even with, with business development, you've still got sewer revenue, and you've got water revenue and potential there, so...
Yeah, absolutely, and there's no one that knows that corridor better than you, Commissioner Sorrels. I mean, that's, that's your home, you know where that's at, what that site means to that end of the county, and the county as a whole. And I think probably just the message that I bring to you from my board is Maggie Valley, as was the case back in 2009 when the property was purchased, the town of Maggie Valley does, I think, contribute ten point three-four percent of the total purchase price, remains committed to the Haywood County Commissioners to be an active partner in this project, and trusting your guidance and your leadership in that, and we're here to help you any way that we can to better that end of the county and all of Haywood County as a whole. So, thank you for that time.
Well, and, you know, I wanna go back to discussing that area down there, you know, many, many years ago, that highway was developed because they potentially saw that area as being a growth quarter for Haywood County. You've got that exit coming off of Interstate forty, you've got sewer down there, you've got water thanks to Maggie Valley, and, you know, for many, many years, the, the properties were held in, in families, old families that farmed, and, you know, basically, that's changing now, as the older folks have passed on, and it's left to families, children, and a lot of them are not even in the area anymore. And so, that corridor has become a little bit more appealing now as far as properties available, and potentially for some, some kind of growth, being it retail-type growth or, or industry growth. So, I, I think that, you know, that was a foresight that our leaders had in the early, late fifties and early sixties and the end of the seventies, so I think that that's, we just, we continue that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Nathan.
You know, I was part of a lot of the discussions with David, and on the rec board, we discussed it, what to do with that property, and, you know, I'm, I'm big on economic development, I've shared that with David and some other folks, you know, in Haywood County, we don't have a lot of property that's suitable for that, that type of industry, so I think it's important that we hold on to property like that for such. You know, I'm always open to other things, but we got property like that, it's got water and sewer coming to it, and as you mentioned earlier, a lot of the folks that, that used to be against something, you know, coming into an area like that have now passed on, may be a good opportunity for us to look at something like that, for some economic development. But either way, like I believe Mike said, getting dirt hauled into the area is gonna be a benefit or a help to have that done, so I'm in support of it, just wanted you to know that.
Brandon, you said, I mean, you're presently sitting on the Recreation Board, and I was sitting on the Recreation Board before, what is the, the consensus or the standing of the Recreation Board regarding this? I mean, this has been a property that we purchased approximately ten years ago with the intent, we had plans to build ball fields on this, you know, unfortunately, the, the way it laid out, it wasn't exactly, it didn't exactly work out to be the type of recreational facility that, that we wanted to bring economic development here, too, by having tournaments and things like that. I mean, we tried to lay it out in several different ways, and we, you know, we could put probably three fields on there, maybe four, but it was, it was difficult on the size. And then, of course, the economic downturn, I mean, it just was prohibitive for us to move forward with recreation, or, or at least we saw the need to do other things instead of that. So, as far as right now, I mean, in, how do you, how does the Recreation Board feel about that?
Well, some of the discussions we've had have been that, you know, I think Mike may have referred to this earlier, some counties around us have already done such, and it's almost like we got behind, you know, maybe we should have done it earlier, and we, we've put it off and waited, and now we've waited to a time that I'm not sure that it benefited us as much, so that's kind of where we stand. I don't wanna speak for the board, I know Claire is here, and if you'd like to come up and speak to that as well, I think that she was all for doing something recreational-wise, as I was, too, you know, it's just that I feel like we've got behind, should have done something earlier. And, you know, just, just in the past couple of months, I'll say this, I've had some conversations with some folks about bringing some industry in, you know, so it kind of opens your eyes a little bit to what's most important, so. Claire, would you like to come up and say anything?
Unfortunately, Bunkham County and Macon County have been proactive, and they basically put us behind.
And Jackson?
Yeah, and Jackson, you know, they've got that big bark over there.
I wanna address that, too, 'cause I'm on the TDA board, you know, and so a few years ago, we, we, we attempted to increase the occupancy tax for development, you know, fund to where you could do something like that, and we got completely killed on that. And, you know, the idea that we were trying to do for that area down there, I mean, there was a tremendous amount of opposition, and, you know, so this is what happens. I mean, you know, we, we have the vision to try to do something, and then, you know, you, you can't get it out of, out of the chute, and then, by the time maybe you could or it comes around to it, then it's, you're, you're behind, you're already too late.
Thank you, Brandon. He was correct in our discussion about that, and also, if there was any proceeds from the sale of this property, that it would be designated for recreation, for maybe smaller parks, pocket parks throughout the county where we're lacking. In addition, we still need consolidation of some of the outerlying baseball fields and other facilities, spoken to those that are involved with Little League Baseball, and that's still very much needed.
Claire, I remember when we had that recreation study, I believe the number one was that we needed to improve what we had.
Correct.
Instead of buying new stuff, was to take what we have and improve it and make it better, and we've not done that, so, you know, the sale of this, it could very well be used for that.
Right, and, and, you know, I was on the Recreation Board back when we were doing a lot of this stuff, and then tried, even when we first tried to broach the subject of the tournament area, tournaments and stuff like that, and, and, you know, we, we went out and tried to pull this stuff together, but it's a little difficult, you couldn't get the, the parties to kind of, to cooperate with us, and so it's still out there, and I mean, you know, we got some, we got some facilities, and we, and, you know, with the right, like you said, combination and trying to get it all together, a lot of this stuff would be doable with some improvements, and, but I know that it just didn't work out, did it?
That's right, we tried. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. David, you'd indicated earlier that, I mean, the, the main reason for this discussion is that dirt, and so you're, and I can't remember the plans, when we looked at the plans for building the ball fields, and, or, but you're indicating to us that no matter the plan, that this property needs the dirt, even if we're gonna use it for recreational purposes, so, I mean, the main thing is making a decision so we can put the dirt out there. And then, then we just have a county property that we, we've basically decided by having this discussion, that maybe we open it up to other things besides recreation, if in fact, a viable industry or company wants to purchase that property that will provide, you know, jobs to Haywood County citizens, that maybe we look at that use as well.
It'll be a little bit more shovel-ready at that point.
That's what I was gonna say, make it shovel-ready by doing this, too.
Because it's, with it being, with its flood plain issues, it's a little bit of a detriment, this, this, we can negate that with, with some of this dirt.
We have any idea how many feet we could raise that property?
Mr. Boyd?
It just, it just depends on how the elevation is on it, there's some that's a little higher, and some that's lower, and then you've got the flood plain that's on across over close to the creek that you can't do anything with.
If you're on, if you're on the Potts Road side, it's, you know, it's worse than that side, as we're going back towards Waynesville, it lessens out.
We talking about three, four, five feet, maybe?
I think it's four feet, is it four feet, Chris?
Three, three.
Three, yeah.
That would make a big difference.
Yeah, three, three to four feet, somewhere in there, yeah.
But, like you said, even though it looks level, it's a lot, it's higher at the, at the end toward Waynesville, so you, you, you got it, and, and, you know, there's already been a couple of areas down there that they've filled in for development. I mean, Dollar General's a good example, and so, I mean, you know, there, it's, and you know, the thing about it is, is you're sitting there, and if you, if you do bring dirt, and it's been used for farming so far, and we've been able to generate a little revenue for the recreation and all through it, but if you start trying to, to fix it, then you can't farm it.
Yeah.
So, if, then if you just let it sit, you're really not justifying what you're doing, so you need to get it out there, and, and, you know, and then again, sitting on the EDC, it's always talking about particular sites and product, they call it product, and, and if you have a, a, a business or an industry or whatever that has an inquiry, you know, they're looking for some properties or, you know, what would be a good fit, and that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, so just, as Mr. Sorrels was saying, that if we put the dirt on there, it will become product, it will not be for agriculture use any longer. It will, you know, it's, it's the wishes of the board, you know, to repurpose this property, and, and we do acquire the dirt, then it, it will, you know, it will go as product, and we'll have to, you know, it'll be seed and sown, and we'll end up taking care of it, and then you've, you know, fortunately, we've had, you know, it's been leased and it's been farmed, but, you know, once this happens, we'll end up, you know, needing to take care of it as well, too, okay, just to be mindful of that.
But if, you know... It's what, from what I understand, though, the guy that is leasing it understands that there may come a point that, that we might take that land back over, is that correct, David?
I said, I'm sorry, say it one more time.
The guy that is leasing the land now, the farmer?
Last, last year, we shortened the lease up because we...
Thought we was gonna get the dirt.
We anticipated this might happen, so the lease expired at the end of September, so there's no, there's currently no lease on there, and if the, if we don't repurpose the property, then we will have to put the property back out for rebid. The person who's had it for, had it, had it for a number of years, that needs to go back and be rebid for the property, so, but the lease has expired.
Well, well, at this point in time, we had, I mean, we had the opportunity to get dirt at, at a good price, and I don't, we're still negotiating that.
If, if a good price, meaning zero price, really?
Well, the, the dirt's free, the contractor wants to, to charge, the, the charge fee down there, and then there was, there was some, they wanted us to reimburse them for their upfront cost, permitting, silk fence, things like that. If we decide to repurpose the, the property, I would ask that you give the Chairman permission to sign a temporary easement that would allow the dirt to be moved from the public site to the Jonathan Creek site, and that price to be determined. On the initial pass of the easement, chip had some changes, Chris did a great job of pointing out some of the potholes in the agreement, so we're waiting today to see what the Board's wishes were for to repurpose the property before we put the easement in final. But the Chairman would need some authority there, because as our discussions is that, you know, we do think that they should be reimbursed from some of their upfront costs on this. As you know, from the Francis Farm Project, that each, each time there, we, we were being charged about three dollars a cubic yard, that was to get the dirt there and to build the cap. With this, this, this will just be strictly the engineering costs, the silk fence and giving the dirt down there, we will still incur a cost to spread it and compact it. We'll still have, we'll still have two costs.
They're gonna, they're gonna do that, right?
No, sir, well, I'm sorry.
The haul bill?
Yeah, yeah, but they, they're, they're asking for us to reimburse them for hauling, but we, we've...
Right, so basically, what we're looking at is the engineering, the, and then the compaction and, and spreading, that's what we're...
There'll be two different costs, there'll be, you know, from the easement for the cost of the permitting, engineering, any of the, the haul bill to be determined, and then the other side of that will be a separate contract that we'll have to have, is for a contractor to go out through there and compact it, and then spread it out at that point. So, it'll be two different companies that'll be doing this.
When, when this initially started, if I'm correct, it was, they needed a place for the dirt. We gotta get, we gotta take, and, and, which I can understand the engineering and the compaction part, but if they need to get, they need to get it to us.
Yeah, yeah, well, they, they, they're, they're giving us the dirt, but they want the haul bill to be, they want it to be reimbursed at twelve-mile round trip.
If they don't?
Yeah, yeah, that's why we've not proceeded any further until we had this discussion, but, so, so if it's the...
Okay, so, I mean, it sounds like to me, we, we need the, we need the dirt no matter, or we don't, we don't necessarily have to have the dirt either, but we need the dirt if we're gonna make a, another use of the property and repurpose it from agricultural lease that it's under, to either some type of product or development or for county purpose. So, and I think, you know, when it comes to the, the easement, I think it needs to be under acceptable terms, and right now, the terms aren't acceptable.
They are not acceptable.
Um, so, we want to repur, I guess our discussion in our agreement, or what we, our decision is the fact that we wanna come out of this saying, okay, we do, we will take the dirt as long as we can get an acceptable easement. The easement terms are acceptable to us, we'll take the dirt.
Correct.
And then also, out of this decision, we wanna decide, are we repurposing it from agricultural lease? Well, I believe, certainly if we're gonna get the dirt, we wanna, we're gonna repurpose it because we can't lease it for agricultural purposes anyway.
Correct.
So, we're gonna turn it into product for economic development or other use, and I want you guys to have, you know, a serious discussion about the recreation purpose. I mean, then the reason is because that was the intent of this property ten years ago. So, I, I've heard what you guys have said, but I wanna make sure that that's, that discussion's had. One thing we haven't discussed in regards to the property is that adjacent to that was some additional property that we were in hopes that we would be able to purchase at some point in time to add to this, that really, we really needed that to make a full recreational project out of it, and that property has been sold. That's been sold by the person who inherited the property from Lucius Jones and sold to another individual, and I, I don't know that that's, that we have the ability to get that property anymore.
But we don't know, we haven't asked, but...
Right, and, and I hate to throw something else in here that doesn't have anything to do with this, but the, the other problem with our, the other recreational facilities that we do have is that we don't own them, okay? They need to be improved, but we don't own them, so that's been one of the problems with improving these properties, I mean, how do we have, what type of relationship agreement do we have with these entities that own these properties to improve them for better use when we don't have any control over them at all? And that, so that's, that's been a, a real problem as well, 'cause we do have facilities that we just don't have them, we don't have them under our control to improve them, to say what can be done with those facilities, so, and if I haven't confused everybody.
But one benefit, too, I think as mentioned earlier, is if we take some of the money, Claire mentioned it, you know, and give back to the rec board, and, you know, if you go to some of these places with some money, usually that opens their eyes, you know, probably we can do some updates, or we could use the money elsewhere, so.
Right.
We're looking at a couple of options on the board, and we'll continue to do so.
Okay, and I'd like to, and I know, Mr. Mashburn, I think you've been involved in, in Iredale County, having a, a pretty robust recreational program there, and, and would like to, to have that input as well. I, I guess what I wanna, what I'm trying to get at as well is, you know, I wanna support recreation, I don't want just, this to just drop off the face of the earth, because this property was intended for that, although it can, it probably, it may be able to be used for a better purpose at this point, so...
And there's a little bit of light at the, you know, this discussion, Stony and Chris and I are working on another project as well, too, that we hope to bring, you know, before the Board with recreation in mind. We met at a particular property last week, we came, we all came away with a, a good, this, this may work, so we're, we're working towards that.
Um, so we're, we're working towards that. Um, so, you know, we're, we're not stopping just because, you know, we're maybe changing the purpose over on one a- aspect. We're still working, trying to make, you know, the recreation program, you know, work to be better in Haywood County.
And I'm, I mean, I, I don't know that we're walking completely away from this property on recreation. I mean, we got no plans to do anything with it. All we're trying to do is make it more attractive for something else also. And if it happens, it happens. But if it doesn't, in a few years, you could still, it's still there. So, uh, you know, I mean.
Okay.
I just, I, you know, I get a lot of people ask, you know, what are you gonna do with it? What are you gonna do with it?
Right.
You know, why don't you just sell it? Well, uh, we know why we're not gonna sell it.
Yeah.
And, and because number one, it'd be tough to, due to the recession and the, the whatever, it'd be very difficult to get the money invested back into it.
You know, from, remember our discussions earlier this year when we talked about there was a 10-year supply of, uh, of land in Haywood County? You know, the absorption rate has decreased some this year. We're, we picked up a little bit of speed. They're selling about 30, uh, vacant land parcels a, a month now.
And the advantage of having this piece of property as a potential economic development site would be that we own it. And we're not having to go out and try and negotiate with the, with the landowner, although they, they property that can be, uh, you know, if, if it happened, not this not to be too attractive and whatever, but it takes that, that element out of it.
Correct, yeah.
You know, Mike, as I said earlier, I got, received a call maybe three weeks ago now or four, and the guy was wanting something fairly quick. You know, so you don't have time to negotiate. So having something like this that's attractive farm, that'll be ready to use, shovel ready, is important, so.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, if it's acceptable, uh, that we repurpose the county-owned property out at Jonathan Creek, uh, from its present agricultural use to a county product for sale or economic development, or, uh, for a county property used for, to be developed for county purposes. So long as, uh, the county can reach acceptable easement terms, uh, with the contractor providing dirt to the property.
I will.
Second.
Any discussion? Anything I missed there?
Did that, that motion give you the authority to sign the easement then? Does that, okay.
And give, and give me the authority to sign the easement in, in the interim? Is that okay to add that to the motion?
Yeah, and, you know, because I, I'm, you're very good about letting us know what's going on, so I'm okay with that.
And they've been, we've been working hard on that. And it's something we don't have to do. If we don't get the right terms, then we don't have to do it. Uh, okay. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next is discussion requiring a contract for services provided and/or materials furnished for any project over $20,000. Um, I've, we had, we had had some discussions before, and, and in the 15 years I've been doing this, we've, uh, changed the contract requirements for board approval from, it's been as little as $5,000. It's gone up to 50,000 to sometimes a hundred thousand. Um, and so, uh, it's not something that, and I'm, actually, Mr. Mashburn had, had some emails, he and I together, about this. And he, I think he wanted to study this and weigh in on this as well. And, and with his experience, I, I would like to, to see what that is. Um, but, you know, w- we have contracts for services and we also have contracts for, um, uh, purchase, purchase orders. And they're governed a little bit differently. And so, um, I, I think it's, it would be good for us to, to have a discussion, at least right now for just a second, to provide to, uh, Mr. Mashburn, kind of our, our feelings towards how much time we want to put into approving contracts. You know, for me, I don't mind having three-hour county meetings, um, or county commissioner meetings to discuss any and all contracts that need to be discussed. Uh, and, and also for, um, you know, to make sure the public is aware of what we do. So Commissioners, I, I'm fine with, um, somewhere around $20,000. I don't even care to go below that. But I think the other side of the Commissioners approving contracts and purchase orders is that it, it might slow down the county, uh, in, in conducting business as well. And we don't wanna do that. So how, how do you all feel about that?
Okay, so, so just to clarify, the contracts for purchase orders is, is like a uh, piece of equipment or, I mean?
Well, it looks like it can be a piece of equipment, can be goods. It can also be, um, it, it looks like to me that it has been a continued uh, contract that we have for, um, services as well. Julie, you can tell, tell a little bit more about that.
We do purchase orders for anything a thousand dollars or more. So whether it's a service contract or a purchase contract, we do a purchase order. But then we fall under the state statutes when it comes to bringing, bringing to the board for your approval, um, what we need. And that, for a purchase of an item, it's 90,000 or more. And for construction, it's 500,000 or more. That's the formal bidding range. And that always came to the board for approval. The others have not.
Yeah. Um, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, don't want to hinder the operation of the county. I mean, that's, that's, I don't think that's what any of us wanna do. But I think, you know, we just had some situations or whatever that maybe some, and I don't know that it actually is purchase orders, maybe just on contracts, that, you know, we, we're responsible. You know, we're, we're looked at as responsible. And maybe some of them that we should have known a little bit more about. And I think that's what, 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 what we're all trying to get at. So as far as, uh, uh, doing a little bit more studying about it, uh, discussing, you know, I mean, I, I mean, ongoing business, and that's basically what you're talking about on purchase orders to an extent.
A lot of it's ongoing business. Sometimes it's, it's new activities that you might wanna look at.
Yeah. But, you know, so, so I think that I, I, I'm, I know that's why we've got this here, is because, you know, we're trying to be more, uh, well, sometimes things just can get by you. And, you know, the buck stops with us. We need to know, and that's what, that's why we're here on this.
Well, I, I just wanna see us have a policy that we adhere to. And right now, I don't know that we're adhering strictly to any policy cause I'm not certain that we have an established policy, um, or at least one that I'm comfortable with. Uh, so I guess, Board, are we okay with moving forward, maybe having Mr. Mashburn look at, um, at what, how we've been doing these contracts and purchase orders up to this point in time and weighing in on this?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, with his experience and what he's had.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good to, to speak with him about it. And, uh, we can put it off till the next meeting. I don't think it has to be something that's done today.
Right, it does. Um, Mr. Mashburn, you think you can work with, uh, with Jubilee, with David, with the people that are involved at, uh, with, um, certainly with, um, people that get involved with obtaining contracts? And the, and the other issue is I wanna make sure that the, for these, some of these smaller contracts, that we have local contractors that have the ability to enter, to, uh, obtain those, that have information about them. Cause that's another complaint that sometimes that we get is that, you know, there's jobs out there that, that they're not aware of that they can do, uh, local contractors.
I, I do appreciate you giving me an opportunity to take a look at it. I, I, when I found out it was on the agenda, I did ask them to, uh, email to me some portions of our policies that relate to that. And there were some things I just did not understand about our procedures. And I wanted some time to, uh, get a, a better feel for what our procedures actually are and what we, uh, currently determine to be, uh, contracts and, uh, it, there were just some things I did not understand. So if you give me a couple more weeks to take a look at that, I think I could probably come back with at least some recommendation that possibly. I, I'm certainly in favor of recognizing the board's accountability for how the funds are spent, uh, that, that you need to feel comfortable with the way it's done. And so, but at the same time, as you indicated, we need to also make sure that it doesn't hinder us from doing, uh, the business of county government in an efficient and effective manner. So give me some time to work on that. I will certainly work with, uh, with the staff to try to, uh, get a better handle on how we do it and then what problems would be presented if we tighten it up any more than it currently is, so that I can present that back to you.
Okay. All right. So is everybody good with, maybe putting this off till the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, we'll just, Kenny, we'll just put that on the agenda the next time. That's more of a discussion regarding that. Uh, next is request reappointment of Robert Dolman to the Town of Clyde Planning Board. Uh, he's made application and he's already, uh, currently serving. So, uh, the Town of Clyde has recommended him to be appointed to that planning board. I'll entertain a motion that Robert Dolman be appointed to the Town of Clyde, uh, Planning Board.
So move.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Next is the, um, request reappointments of William Osborne, Carl Jackson, and Tommy Stamey to the Town of Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments. Town of Clyde has recommended those appointments. I'll entertain a motion to approve such.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So those folks are reappointed to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments. Next is request approval of reappointments of Zeb Smathers and Mi- Michael Kownacki to the Recreation Advisory Board. Both have made, uh, application. And I've served with both these folks and they've done a very good job. Um, I think all the board members, uh, they work well together. I'll entertain a motion. Actually, do you have anything you wanna add to that, Brandon?
No, just same comments. I've worked with them now for almost a year and, uh, both of them does a really good job. So.
Okay.
I'm in support of both of them.
All right. Then that'd be your motion to reappoint Zeb Smathers and Michael Kownacki?
Yep, you got it.
We got a second from camp.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so, uh, Zeb Smathers and Michael Kownacki are, are reappointed to the Recreation Advisory Board. All right. Do we have anything else for open session? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. We're gonna review closed session minutes. The General, North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318.11A1. Is there a motion?
So move. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are in closed session. Okay, we are back from closed session and after closed session. Uh, we've got a few motions. I'll entertain a motion to approve and release closed session minutes, uh, regarding, uh, let's see, closed session minutes. August 21st, 2017. Attorney-client privilege, September 5th, 2017. And personnel, October 16th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. And then entertain a motion to approve but not release and review at a later date. Attorney-client privilege, closed session minutes of August 21st, Octo- and October 3rd, 3 sets, October 3rd, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And I will indicate, uh, indicate. Entertain.
Entertain.
A motion to approve but not release closed session minutes regarding personnel. Uh, three sets from August, August 21st, 2017, three sets from September 5th, 2017, three sets from October 3rd, 2017, and two from October 16th, 217, 2017.
Second. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Any other business for the board today? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. And we are adjourned.